Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call.
Certainly. Ms. Arminio. Ms. Belko. Ms. Belko. Ms. Beerman. Mr. Chirrell. Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Polori.
I'm present.
Mr. Rotsky.
I'm here.
The Siegel.
Here.
Skirby.
Here.
Mr. Tofano. Mr. Tofano is not in yet. Let it be noted, Ms. Arminio, Ms. Belko, and Mr. Tofano are not in at the start of the meeting, but the quorum is present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted June 11th, 2021, at all schools on the district website at HTTPS backslash backslash WWW.MONRO.K12.NJ.us, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality. Instructions for making a public comment. To make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. When you are called upon to speak during public forum, your microphone status will be set to unmute. Please do not attempt to unmute yourself as this may cause your microphone to stay muted. When called upon, you will be given the option to share your device's camera with the rest of the panelists and attendees during your speaking time. If you choose to do this, simply click the video camera icon. After you are unmuted, please state your name and address for the record. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to four minutes duration or less in accordance with Board Bylaw 0167. After you are finished speaking, you will be muted, and your permission to share your camera will be disabled. Please, at that time, kindly turn off the raise hand feature. Addy, Mr. Nikotinsky, for public forum tonight, I have one comment submitted.
Okay.
Just for your information.
All right, next, we have student staff recognitions.
Okay, so this is another exciting evening we have tonight to take a look at what some of our staff and students have accomplished since our last meeting, that where we did student and staff recognitions. We have over 200 students being recognized this evening for their accomplishments. So it's very exciting to do that. That's why you see quite a few administrators and staff members on the call with us tonight because they are going to be doing the presentations. So, Mr. Tags, can you have Mr. Meraldo share his screen?
Already ready to go.
Thank you. All right, for next slide, Mr. Meraldo. So, as I already mentioned, we have over 200 students that we're recognizing this evening. So we will get right into it if we want to move on. Ms. Shanley, would it be here this evening?
Dr. Alvek, I'm actually here.
Wonderful. I know she's having difficulty with electricity and internet.
Yes, thank you so much. I still don't have internet, but I'm on my phone. So you can only hear my voice, but I want to thank you very much, Dr. Alvek, and thank you very much, Zach. Zach Meraldo was stepping up to help me out. But I have the pleasure of just saying welcome. And as Dr. Alvek said, we are so fortunate to be able to recognize so many students who are able to be successful, both in the athletic world as well as the academic world and for different arts and different abilities, even though we had a very crazy year that is now coming to an end. So thank you very much, and I'm glad I'm able to be here if in voice only. So the one slide that I get to share, as soon as we get that turned. Is that moving along? There we go, is I'd like to at this time recognize Pratham Rayo. Pratham Rayo is one of our students who was very successful outside of school, and the information was shared with us, and we were extremely excited to bring it to the entire community, that he ran a half marathon. He completed this half marathon in a fabulous time, as you can see there, and we are beyond proud of him. He went ahead and took it upon himself to do something in addition to what he was doing at school, you know, grabbing onto an opportunity to really excel, even during a difficult time when we were coming out of the abnorm into the norm. So I would like to just compliment Pratham Rayo. Very, very excited. So I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present Pratham Rayo with his exceptional half marathon score this evening, as well as the fact that we'll get to continue this program with the wonderful things that the Monroe Township Middle School students have done. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Susan Gasko to continue on as she gives great praise to our mathematics area. Thank you so much, Ms. Gasko.
Thank you. First, I want to say congratulations to all of our recipients tonight. Our middle school math team competes in several competitions throughout the year. Two of them this year were the Middle School Math Olympiad and the Mathematics League competitions. Just to give you an idea of those two competitions, the Math Olympiad, there's about 100,000 students that participate across all 50 states, the three American territories, and over 30 foreign countries. So when you hear the results of that, understand that they will be international results that you're going to be hearing. The Math League is a state league that we joined. 64 schools competed in the eighth grade contest this year. As a team, the Monroe Middle School ranked number one in the Math League in the Middlesex County region. All right, so I would like to highlight a few of the students. The first one, as you see on the screen, is Akilin Prabhu. All right, Akilin ranked second in the Middlesex County region of the Math League, and he scored in the top 20% internationally in the Math Olympiad, earning a silver pin. The next student is going to be Arnav Akavaram. Arnav ranked third in the region in the Math League, and then scored in the top 2% internationally in the Math Olympiad, earning a gold pin. And lastly, we have one more student. Mahanth Kamuravalli. Mahanth ranked fourth in the top 38 students in the state. Okay, so the other two scores are for the region. This is for the state in the eighth grade contest in the New Jersey Math League, having the second highest score. And to give you an idea of what that score is, that's getting 34 questions correct out of 35. In the region, in the Middlesex region, he was ranked number one. In addition, he scored in the top 2% internationally in the Math Olympiad, also earning a gold pin. And he also earned the George Lencher Award for a perfect score of 25 out of 25 questions on all five contests. So along with that, he won a trophy for the highest individual score as well. And again, the Math Olympiad is actually an international competition they have. So along with that, I would now like to introduce Mr. Zach Meraldo to get recognition for the awards and career technology.
I think Mr. Meraldo is having some technical issues and is not able to come off of mute this evening. So I will share Ms. Cummings' students. So Ms. Sarah Cummings is the teacher of Technology Education and the advisor for our TSA Technology Student Association at the Monroe Township Middle School. So she oversees the state-approved Career and Technical Student Association. In the middle school TSA, our students spend all year preparing for a competition, problem-based event. And in the spring, despite the challenges of this school year, they had an opportunity to compete against other middle schools throughout the state. This year's conference and preparation were all held virtually. Students met via Microsoft Teams during club meetings, times, and collaborated in breakout rooms. They had a very successful year and had 26 students placed in seven different events. We're so proud of all of the hard work the students have put in, as well as their flexibility in adapting to this year's different format. So the results are as follows. In Biotechnology, we have a second-place New Jersey TSA state competition for Aditya Alvakar, Tanishi Pendya, and Shivam Patel. In Computer-Aided Design, CAD, Foundation's second place, Elijah Gotovski. In the Construction Challenge, we have second place Natalia Andreid, Nivedya Deepak, Sunan Dita Krishnadas, and Sanjay Lokesh. In Data Science and Analytics, third place, Ishanvi Desai, Mahesh Himokuntala, and Tisha Kahl. In Data Science and Analytics, second place, Akshara Karthik, Tanya Kumar, and Simran Singh. In Mass Production, first place, Ishika Agarwal, Raji Nikita, Avudhaya Pan, and Abhinav Rajesh. In Mechanical Engineering, third place, Ankita Alawah, Ishan Daniel, Lashika Khanna, and Abhishek Tarala. And in Microcontroller Design, second place, Venkata Kashik, Adiraju, Abhishek Anand, Tanush Siva, Saharsh Medi Kalam, and Evan McCollum. Did I get all of them? And Tanush Siva. So now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Higgins for the high school recognitions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alvek. I just want to first join in on the sentiments of my fellow administrators. We have over 200 students here. It could easily be over 2,000 students that we're recognizing tonight. I'm very proud of all of the accomplishments of our students and staff at the high school. You're seeing a picture up there of our junior prom, which was held outside. I think it's an awesome picture. I think it was an awesome night. And it took a lot of moving parts to get those events completed at our school this year. So I just want to thank all of our students and all of our staff who have come together in just a crazy year. We will start our recognition. I will introduce Ms. Diana Kaiser, who is our teacher of English as a Second Language, to introduce our first couple of honorees. Ms. Kaiser, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure. It is my pleasure to introduce Natalia Delgado, who is a junior at MTHS. She has been featured in this year's edition of Aspirations, which is a literary and visual arts magazine published by Mercer County Community College. It represents the talents of area high school students. Each year, the college invites local schools to participate in the competition, from which the very best in original art and writing are chosen for publication. Natalia wrote an original piece inspired by Sandra Cisneros, in which she writes about feelings of nostalgia. It is called Toro Verde, or Everything Green. And you can find the magazine online, and her work appears on page 20. Natalia came to us from Ecuador at the start of the school year, and we are so proud of everything that she has accomplished so far. Congratulations, Natalia. Dr. Higgins?
Yes, moving on, I'll introduce Dr. Kelly Rozell, who will continue with our Seal of Bileiteracy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Higgins, and thank you, Ms. Kaiser. I am here to recognize the Seal of Bileiteracy recipients. Monroe Township High School has been participating in the State Seal of Bileiteracy Program since its inception five years ago. And this program seeks to honor seniors who speak multiple languages, but not just speak. They also have to be able to demonstrate proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. They must demonstrate this in addition to demonstrating their proficiency in English. This year, we changed the program a little bit. We switched assessments to allow more languages to be tested, and that resulted in us having our largest group of recipients, which is really incredible. I'm so proud of these students, given the circumstances as well. So our first recipient is Michelle Alves, who earned the seal in Portuguese. Slide. We had four students earn the seal in Italian. Peter Angelo, Victoria Dalton, David Mariello, and Michael Valentine. We had seven students earn the seal of bileiteracy in Spanish. Connor Bassey, Miramar Duran, Shilpa Girigu, Gabriela Gomez Menendez, Krishna Neer, Sofia Ramirez, and Mira Raju. Two students earned in French, Alison Fu and Kara Offenberg. Salva Arson, Salva Kumar earned the seal in Tamil. Abigail Semsel and Priya Thakapali earned the seal in Latin. And we had a couple students who earned the seal in two languages. They are trilingual. The first is Justin Sochi, who earned in French and Tagala. And Ipsa Mishra, who earned in Hindi and Spanish. I am very proud of these students. Bileiteracy is by far one of the most in-demand skills that students can leave our schools with, and we pride ourselves on a strong language program and honoring the many heritage and native languages spoken by our students. Mr. Higgins, are you going to introduce Ms. DeMarco? Go ahead. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Rozell. At this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Sharon DeMarco, who is our teacher of English and Language Arts and is also one of our advisors from the National English Arts Honor Society. Sharon?
Thank you, Dr. Higgins, Dr. Rozell. As advisor for the National English Honor Society, I'm here to recognize and honor five high school seniors for the national award they've received this spring from Sigma Tau Delta. In 2017, Monroe Township High School began its own chapter of the National English Honor Society, NEHS. To be accepted into this honor society, juniors and seniors must evident consistent, high achievement in honors and AP-level English Language Arts classes. Each year, NEHS members across the entire country unite through the Common Reader, a national book club, if you will. Despite the pandemic and meetings limited to Zoom, Monroe's chapter of the NEHS delved into the novel The Nickel Boys by Colson Whitehead. Inspired by truth, this Pulitzer Prize-winning story is about an African-American boy growing up in 1960s Tallahassee who survived untold horrors at a corrupt juvenile reform school. It was based loosely on the Dozier School of Florida. So at our NEHS bi-monthly meetings on Zoom, from November to January, we read and discussed this book. Literary analysis essays were written by these five winners and submitted for evaluation to the national organization's website, which is supervised by Sigma Tau Delta, the International English Honor Society of high schools and colleges. Members of the board, the school administrators, educators, parents, and the entire Monroe community, on behalf of the Monroe Township High School, we are so proud to recognize those five Monroe Township High School seniors who wrote award-winning essays as part of that national reading and writing experience, earning scholarships for college. The five winners of the 2021 National English Honor Society Sigma Tau Delta Scholarship Essay Contest are Vishwa Bat, Taylor Brown, Harshini Ganesh, Ipsa Mishra, and Kirtenatala. Here are their pictures on the slideshow. Taylor Brown and Kirtenatala. Next slide. Vishwa Bat, she, by the way, was our president. Harshini Ganesh, our secretary. Ipsa Mishra. And also, next slide. Oh, not. Okay, Kirtenatala. So please join me in recognizing these five MTHS seniors on their accomplishment, which really is a testament to the great things that can come from a rigorous English Language Arts curriculum and a supportive literary community. Congratulations to Vishwa, Taylor, Harshini, Ipsa, and Kirtena. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeMarco. For our next slide, we have an individual honor for her work in Ms. Sunstrom's Language Arts class. This year, they were working on writing letters to the editor. Navriti Agaram wrote a letter to the editor to the New York Times, which was published this year. And it was a topic of how she felt working in a school during the pandemic. So I think that's a very big honor. I'm actually going to reach out to Ms. Sunstrom and see if we can get that article and put it on our website for people to see, if possible. But congratulations to Navriti for that accomplishment. In our next slide, we are also going to honor Jeet Patel for his work in national speech and debate tournaments. Jeet was working in these tournaments really on his own. He was sponsored by the school, but they were tournaments that he was working in as an individual. And in his accomplishments, he was one of only four students from New Jersey to enter the finals of the National Speech and Debate Tournament, which is happening currently the end of this month. Jeet performed in several different tournaments and was selected as one of the four students representing New Jersey in the national tournament. He is also representing Monroe Township High School in the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions and was the only student in the semifinals of that. So thank you and congratulations to Jeet. Next slide. At this time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Giovanna Quindaz, who is a teacher of special education at Monroe Township High School. She was also the advisor of our Key Club for the next presentation. Ms. Quindaz?
Good evening. My name is Giovanna Quindaz. And I just want to read the Key Club motto, which is caring, our way of life. Through Key Club's work in the home, school, and community, Key Club members have learned that their organization is built around the concept of caring. And the core values of Key Club International are leadership, character building, caring, and inclusiveness. I just want to reiterate what everyone has said this year has been a challenge. Many of my students do volunteer activities outside of school. And during this year, it was very, very difficult for them to accomplish that. And most of the activities that they did were online, and they just blew my mind with all the ideas that they would come up with and that they accomplished during this year. It was a tremendous, tremendous amount of work. And this person right here, Matt Euro, he is an outstanding young man, and he will definitely come a long way, and he wants to be a teacher. So he will be going next year to TCNJ. He won Outstanding Lieutenant Governor Award, the Barry H. Werfel Outstanding Board Member Award, Robert F. Lucas Outstanding Lieutenant Governor Award, and he was the winner of the John Johnson Memorial Scholarship. Next slide. Steven Euro, his brother took over and won Lieutenant Governor of Division Eight for the New Jersey District Key Club International. During elections in April, Steven ran and won in a landslide, and now he will be leading our Key Club and seven other Key Clubs. Kenneth Sakot also ran for Lieutenant Governor. Since Steven became our Lieutenant Governor, they decided to give him other schools to be in charge of because there had been other students that were running, and they gave Kenneth the position of Lieutenant Governor of Division 19. Eric Wong became District Treasurer. Sana Kakumanu, she is in the Arts Department. She was elected as our district editor. She took first place in Club Video Award Contest, which was all the way back in October. Then she won first-place environmental awareness contest. And then she also won for first-place back-to-school poster contest. And she will also be on the state board. Taylor Brown, she was the winner of the New Jersey District Board of Governors Scholarship, and she was the vice president of Key Club this year. Lindsay Harrington won first place in a digital poster contest. And this was my board. Taylor Brown was vice president. Ethan Henley was president. Lauren LaSoho was my secretary. Grace Ferguson was my webmaster. And Francesca DiNacola was the web editor. And I think that was them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Quindaz. Our next honoree is Ms. Shannon Wu, and she won an honor through the video production classes at Monroe Township High School. She won second place in this year's Middlesex County Don't Drive Dangerously Video PSA Contest. This contest is open to teenagers in all public and non-public Middlesex County high schools. Each high school is invited to submit an English and/or Spanish 62nd student-produced public service announcement, or PSA video, or a 30-second audio PSA that focuses on the consequences of driving while distracted. This year, Shannon chose to do a video production and came in second place. And she chose to do the video production because last year she was part of a team that submitted an audio production, and they actually came in first place last year. So congratulations to Shannon for her accomplishment. And I will now introduce Mr. Mark Pierce, I believe is on, for his presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Higgins. Good evening, everyone. As you can see, I'm the advisor for the Economics and Finance Team, and I have two really great announcements to present tonight, and I'm very proud of these students. The first announcement this evening is in regards to the Personal Finance Challenge that is a national competition, and it is an opportunity to demonstrate knowledge within the area of personal finance, specifically by connecting students virtually through an online competition, first at the state level and then nationally. And at Monroe Township High School, we had three different teams place second, third, and fifth in the state. And you can see their names on the left-hand side. Faison Ayub, Suraj Bijou, Gabe Kilmanzki, Anarag Namala, Nish Patel, Raj Patel, Shiven Patel, Anrud Reddy, Raj Shah, Tanav Sareddy, and Max Zhang. And the other announcement for tonight is, thank you, is another academic competition that our team was very successful with this year was the Consumer Bowl, is what it's called, and it's sponsored by, as you can see, the New Jersey Division of Consumer Affairs. It's an educational competition for high school students across the state of New Jersey, and it was established in 1997. and it was established in 1997 and touches on all aspects of consumer issues. And this team of Maya Govindu, Nish Patel, Anarag Namala, Tanav Saretti, and Tej Balaga won the county, at the county level, and we, as Monroe Township High School, represented Middlesex County at the state level. And they did an incredible job and represented us very, very well. So congratulations to all those students. And Dr. Kalella, I will pass it along to you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Dr. Higgins.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning in on this special night. We would now like to recognize Ms. Deanna Dale, Business Teacher and Advisor of the Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA Chapter at MTHS. Ms. Dale has advised the FBLA for the last fifteen years, and in that time, the club has grown to over two hundred and fifty students. Not only is the FBLA one of our largest clubs at MTHS, it's also been one of the most successful in terms of its performances in regional, state, national academic competitions. Along with a host of other awards received this year, the MTHS FBLA Chapter was honored for having the highest number of student winners at the 2021 State Leadership Conference. I'd also like to note, under Ms. Dale's leadership, the FBLA has also been one of the most active clubs in its service to the community. On behalf of Building and District Administration, and indeed, the entire Monroe Township School community, thank you very much, Ms. Dale, for your continued passion and dedication to the MTHS FBLA Chapter. And now back to Dr. Higgins.
Thank you, Dr. Kalella. I have a few more individual academic awards to hand out or recognitions to hand out. This one is a surprise, but we visit here with Matthew Euro again in recognition of all of his work this year and in the past, and as you can see in past slides, the accolades that he has garnered for himself. Matthew was chosen as Monroe Township High School's Middlesex County Administrators Association Outstanding Student. What each, each high school in Middlesex County chooses a student from their, from their student body. It doesn't necessarily have to be a senior, but there's, there's no doubt that Matthew is an outstanding student and one of the most outstanding students in our school. So I wanted to congratulate him for his hard, hard work and dedication to the school and the community of Monroe itself. So congratulations, Matthew. There is a plaque that comes along with this award, and I will award that to Matthew when I see him. So thank you. And the next, the next recognition is for Ms. Olivia Toto. Olivia is a senior who we are very proud of. She was nominated and participated in the New Jersey Student Virtual Roundtable with the Commissioner of Education. Olivia, very proud of Olivia. I've known Olivia since she was in first grade when I was her Vice Principal at Barclaybrook. Students at this roundtable were asked to share their experiences working in a virtual and hybrid schedule for education. Students were also asked to give suggestions to the Commissioner to better improve the quality of education and throughout the state. And if anybody knows Olivia, I'm sure the Commissioner took her suggestions to heart, and we will see those changes enacted very soon. So congratulations to her and thank you for her participation in that roundtable. And before I turn this over to Mr. Dowling for some athletic recognitions, I just want to thank every, all of our teachers and our students today that you're, you're seeing and that are working very hard and presenting today. And Mr. Maralda, thank you very much for all the hard work that you've done. With that, I will introduce Mr. Sean Dowling, our Director of Athletics and Supervisor of Health and Physical Education.
Thank you, Dr. Higgins. It's a great night to be a Falcon. On behalf of our student athletes and coaches, I'd like to thank some of the VIPs in the room. There's a lot of big names here for your support of Falcon Athletics. Thank you, Dr. Alvik, who many of you may recall did a great job throwing out the first pitch at our softball senior night. Dr. Lamon, Dr. Higgins, and our Vice Principals, Ms. Weiss, Mr. Collins, Dr. Kalella, and Dr. Sinasky, and then Mrs. Arminio and all the entire Board of Education. Your collective support made our triumphant return of spring athletics that much more special. So on the, again, on behalf of our student athletes and coaches, thank you. So congratulations to Joanna Justino and Aiden Judge for being named our Greater Middlesex Conference, which I'll refer to as a GMC for the rest of the evening, Scholar Athletes. Both Joanna and Aiden were honored at a banquet last week, a Scholar Athlete banquet with all of the other Scholar Athletes in the county. Joanna is a soccer and basketball player who will be taking her talents to Arcata University, and Aiden participated in cross-country and track and will be attending Penn State this fall. So congratulations to Joanna and Aiden. Next slide, please. Our GMC Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations to Christian Cipuleta and Rosie Reagan for being selected as our Falcon representatives for the GMC Sportsmanship Award. Rosie is a three-sport athlete and Christian is a two-sport athlete. And having the pleasure of watching both of them in the winter and, and Christian in the spring, it's, it's very easy to tell why they're both worthy of this honor just by watching the way they carry themselves both on the field or court and off the field. So congratulations. We're gonna present them with two GMC trophies at one of the graduation practices, I believe. So congratulations to Christian and Rosie. Audrey Lynch is on the Monroe Township High School's recipient of the NJSIAA Scholar Athlete Award. Audrey is an outstanding student athlete who participated in soccer. This prestigious award comes with a $500 scholarship as well. So good for you. Congratulations, Audrey. So to many of our sports awards, so we're going to start off with a couple of winter sports. Your Athletic Director neglected to include them in our last ceremony this past winter. Our boys' basketball team had an outstanding season, again, very challenging schedule. They won what we call the Taylor Family Pod, which was something that the GMC came up with as in lieu of a county tournament during the end of, towards the end of our pandemic. So as you can see, the picture here, great picture, Chris Kobrowelski, who was first-team All-Red Division and will be playing basketball at Oneonta. Jacob Labaska, Aiden McLaughlin, who is a multi-sport athlete. He's gonna go, he was second-team All-Division and attending Montclair State to play football. Connor Gavilanis, one of all the lacrosse players. You'll hear about him later on as well. Jonathan Okocha, Joshua Okocha, Elijah Okocha, Ryan Surawiki, Miles Marabutto, Aiden Lane, and then the coaching staff of Coach Warner, Coach Heinz, and Coach Isola. So a belated congratulations to our varsity boys' basketball team. And I'd like to turn it over to Coach Ricker to talk about our winter track athletes.
Hey, guys. How's it going? This is Christian Jessup. Just because I see the girl slide up there, I'll jump in and announce the girls right here. So we had three ladies, you know, in a weird, weird year without a lot of invitationals or competition because normally we're down inside the bubble down in Tom's River. We were able to get some ladies all-conference. The following three, you see Taylor, Kristen, and Michelle, all were all-conference. Taylor and Kristen, both in the eight-hundred, and Michelle was selected for the two and the four. And then I don't, I don't know if, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Coach Jessup. Yes, Coach Jessup does coach our girls' track program. Coach Ricker coaches our boys. Next up, I'd like to bring back Coach Pierce to talk about golf.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dowling. So I wanted to recognize this evening, Tanisha Bora. She was honored with All-Division honors and also was extremely successful, had an outstanding sophomore season by qualifying as, qualifying as an individual at the Tournament of Champions, which means that she was ranked a top fifty female golfer in the state of New Jersey, and she's only a sophomore. So she has a really bright future and she's a great person both on the course as well as off. So congratulations to her, and we're lucky to have her on the team. Mr. Dowling, back to you.
Thank you, Coach. So now I'd like to bring back Coach Jessup again to talk about spring track. All right. So we're having some technical difficulties, I see. So our spring track season is still going on right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you'd rather hear from Coach Jessup than me. So go ahead, Coach.
All right. So I apologize for that. Here we go. So in the spring year, again, Michelle was able to continue her success. We had unfortunately a limited large meet schedule, but she had a very successful GMC's All-Individual Championships, a successful GMC relays, as well as state sectionals where she qualified to the Group Four Championships in the 200 meter. And she was selected, she was the girls' representative for all-conference this year. And as a junior, I'm hoping it's only getting better for next year.
Thank you, Coach Jessup. Now I would like to bring our boys' track coach, Coach Ricker, on.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to mention these two gentlemen together because they do work together quite often in terms of training. They both work extremely hard. They have a great deal of talent. And whenever they ran the mile together, which is, we know is a sixteen-hundred, they were within one place of each other at every event. So with the GMC Championships, Mike was fourth, Jaden was fifth. They both broke the school record in that. At States, Mike was second, Jaden was third. Again, they were under the school record, again, their own records. And then at group, they both moved on to groups. At Groups, Jaden was eleventh and Mike was twelfth. And again, they broke the record yet again. So these two gentlemen have done a great job in the mile. Mike was recognized all-conference for his accomplishments in the mile and the two-mile with times of 422 and 938 respectively, which most of us probably run a mile in that time. He is going to continue to compete for TCNJ, and I look forward to seeing what he does there. Jaden is going to be recognized as All-Division in the eight-hundred. He placed third in the eight-hundred at GMCs, which is a very tough field. He's also now moving on to the Medal of Champions. He's one of the top thirty athletes in the state as a sophomore. So both these gentlemen are going to have great successes in the future, Mike in college, and I obviously look forward to seeing what Jaden does with us in the next two years. Thank you, Mr. Dowling.
Thank you, Coach Ricker. Next, I'd like to introduce Coach Karen Curran to talk about softball.
Thanks, Mr. Dowling. Hi, everybody. Tonight, I would like to recognize our junior shortstop, Abigail Palowski. Abby has been honored this year as an All-Division and All-Conference Player for Monroe Township High School. Since the very start, Abby's been a leader who shows dedication, hard work, and heart on and off the field. She sets the tone for our team and pushes everybody to be the very best that they can be. She's an all-around successful softball player who has absolutely earned this special honor. So congratulations to Abigail Palowski.
Thank you, Coach Curran. So in the next few presentations and sports that we bring up, you're going to see a recurring theme happening. All of our coaches this year did a wonderful job, not only coaching the Xs and Os and the organizational part, but they're also transformational in embracing education-based athletics. And it's much more than winning and losing. I've always said winning is a pleasant byproduct of what we were really trying to do with Falcon Athletics. So now I'd like to introduce the GMC Coach of the Year for Boys Tennis, Matt Volzuski.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Dowling. I, it is my pleasure to introduce and recognize Senior Boys Tennis Player, Arav Modi. Arav was selected to the All-Greater Middlesex Conference and All-Red Division Teams. He is also the first tennis player in the history of Monroe Township High School to win the first singles flight at the GMC Boys Tennis Tournament. His record this year was eighteen and four. He was a four-year varsity starter and was selected captain over the last two years. His career record is thirty-seven and sixteen, and he will be attending Rutgers University in the fall. Thank you, Mr. Dowling.
Thank you, Coach, and congratulations once again. So now I'd like to introduce our GMC White Division Coach of the Year, Coach Steck, to talk about our first-year Boys Volleyball Program.
Mr. Dowling, it looks, doesn't look like Ms. Steck is with us tonight.
Okay, so, well, as I, I'll take that then.
Mr. Dowling.
I'm here. I'm here. Let me put my camera on. Okay, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the season. I'm kind of new here. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Victoria Steck, and I'm a Health and PE teacher at the high school, as well as the girls' and boys' volleyball coach. As our first season as a Boys Varsity Volleyball Program comes to an end, we have so much to be proud of. We completed our first season as a varsity program with an eleven-and-four record, finishing the year with the best record in the White Division. Unfortunately, due to GMC rules, we were unable to be recognized as Division Champions, but that obviously did not stop our program from celebrating our success and achievements. Our season was highlighted by two All-Division players, Arnav Patel and Anish Shah, who led our team in all aspects of the game. We even received an All-Conference Player, Anish. He was the first ever conference player in, obviously, in Boys Volleyball History. We, we owe a lot of, we owe a lot to Anish for the success of our program. He basically blocked every single player in the GMC, and he really allowed us to set our defense up around him. I'm just really excited to see what him and the rest of the team have for next season. And I would just like to thank everyone for really making this first year as our, as our program really successful and for your unlimited support. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Steck, and congratulations once again on Coach of the Year.
Thank you.
So I'll take this one. So our Coach of the Year, Coach Razino, is unable to attend tonight because she also coaches a club team that has some practices tonight. So I'm going to read a statement from Coach for you. So on behalf of our GMC Girls Lacrosse Coach of the Year, oh, I just said this, I will share the accomplishments of the girls' lacrosse athletes. This year's MTHS Girls Lacrosse Team was full of fourteen seniors who led the way to snag the number-one seed in the county tournament after going undefeated in the conference. Gianna Calendrusio was named First Team All-Conference with twenty-three goals, twelve assists, eleven draw controls, and she was also named the number one, our number-one senior in New Jersey. Audrey Estavillo was named First Team All-Conference with thirty-five goals, twenty assists, twenty-one ground balls, and fifteen draw controls. Next slide. Yeah, thank you. So Captain Celia Brasswell was named 2021 GMC Defensive Player of the Year. She is our defender who face guards, runs our defense, and nonstop hustles. She is a threat on the defensive end and made our defense lockdown all year long. Congratulations to Celia. Kelly Batolia was a captain as well, was named 2021 GMC Offensive Player of the Year. She led the team in goals and reached over one hundred goals this season. She is a leader all, all over the field and is the glue to why our offense works so well. And I was there that day. She scored her hundredth goal. It's a very big-time milestone in lacrosse. Very excited for her. And then the rest of the girls as part of our Red Division Championship Team, Kaylee Batolia, Graciela Bareski, Celia Brasswell, Elizabeth Brasswell, Gianna Calendrusio, Julian Calendrusio, Allison DePalma, Emily DeWorsop, Audrey Estavillo, Vanilla Gangasani, Francesca Gianola, Christian Giordano, Caroline Guerin, Brielle Kwikowski, Ava Pa... Francesca Gianola, Christian Giordano, Caroline Guerin, Brielle Kwikowski, Ava Palmer, Isha Patel, Pooja Patel, Rosie Reagan, Isabella Saladuras, Nicole Turco and Haley Wilson. Congratulations on a wonderful season, ladies. So next up, I'd like to bring up our red division Coach of the Year for baseball, Coach Sean Fields.
How's it going, everybody? We had a great season this year. We were 14 and seven. We had a team full of new starters just coming off COVID. So, you know, they missed the year, but they came out strong. As a result, we had the best start in school history at 10 and two, and then again at 14 and four. We, we won the first red division title in school history for baseball, which was awesome. And we had four players that were all red, Nick Solari, CJ Wozniowski, Jacob Vesco and Garrett Van Buren. And then for our varsity team, for our players that we had, Justin Holmes, Ryan Lockhart, Christian Luca Damo, Karan Patel, Greg Petro, Mateo Solisi, Chris Urbannick, Garrett Van Buren, Jacob Vesco, Josh Weinstein, Ian Padula, Nick Solari, CJ Seiverson, Braden Weiss, CJ Wozniowski, Brian Zerwicki, Aiden Lane, Trevor Wallace and Harrison Lowton. Thank you very much, Mr. Dowling. Appreciate it.
And congratulations once again, Coach Field. Next, I'd like to introduce our GMC Boys Lacrosse Coach of the Year, Coach Yanoni, to talk about his boys lacrosse season and award recipients.
Mr. Tagliafarro, I don't see Mr. Yanoni in the, as a presenter.
Mr. Yanoni is in.
Oh, I do see him.
If he can unmute himself if he's here.
Mr. Dowling, you might have to take this one.
Yeah. Okay, I'll start as we go through. So, and if Coach Yanoni, you can unmute yourself, then you can jump right in. So again, congratulations, Coach Yanoni. All of these coaches were voted Coach of the Year by their peers, which is really special. They really did a great job. We had a lot of, the team itself had great success as our GMC Conference Champions. So our second team all-conference, Timothy Tuin, Christian Cipolletta and Christian Updale did a wonderful job for the Falcons. And first team all-conference, we had Connor Gavilanis, who we talked about with basketball as well, Zach LaCerc, Chris Puccirelli, Anton Updale and Zach Seppi were all first team recipients of all-conference. Our Greater Middlesex Conference Player of the Year was Chris Puccirelli. A very exciting, very fun to watch and really made the offense go. And congratulations to Chris for that honor. So every once in a while, a special player comes along, recognized by the coaches in his conference. And Zach Seppi was our faceoff specialist for the team this year. And those of you who play pickup basketball know the expression winners out. So when we scored a goal, we usually got the ball right back with Zach as a faceoff specialist. Zach is our GMC US Lacrosse All-American. So that's, that's a big deal in lacrosse and congratulations to Zach, who will be attending Robert Morris next year as well. And again, what a great year for, for our boys lacrosse team. They were red division champions and they were the Greater Middlesex Conference County Champions as well as they went over and beat our friends from Ulbridge on a not so sunny evening at Serraville High School. So those team members are Matthew Bass, Luke Brzezinski, Anthony Chafi, Christian Cipolletta, Christopher Chavez, John Syriak, Erja Kocet. If I mispronounced that, I apologize. Jonah Diaz, Colin Dominguez, Brian Enos, Anthony Gavilanis, Connor Gavilanis, Christian Herman, Devin Kennedy, Christian Condrick, Jordan LaCerc, Zach LaCerc, Max LeBra, Christian Puccirelli, John Salem, Taylor Scott, Zach Seppi, Frank Tellerico, Timothy Tuin, Giovanni Tofano, Anton Updale, Christian Updale, Varan Magadam, Jason Weiss, Jacob Weiss, excuse me, Spencer White and Evan Winfo. Congratulations to our entire lacrosse program on a wonderful season. And with that, I'd like to extend a final thank you to the Monroe community for all your wonderful support of Falcon Athletics. I, I believe it all came to fruition at the end at our, our state sectional final lacrosse, boys lacrosse game that we hosted, where we had close to 1,000 fans turn out. We're a great community event and looking to continue that momentum now into the fall. I will tell you, I really enjoyed my first spring here. And just remember, what are the six best words you can ever say to your son or daughter after they, you've watched them play? And those are, I, I love to watch you play. Those are the six best words you can ever say to your son or daughter after a game. Thank you, everyone. It is truly a great night to be a Falcon. Dr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Dowling. And I just want to say congratulations to all of our honorees tonight. I want to again thank our coaches and our teachers and our administrators for coming out tonight to help us honor our students at the high school and the middle school. With that, I will give it back to you, Dr. Alvec.
So, so yeah, I want to just thank everyone this evening because as you can see, even with the pandemic, it didn't stop our staff and our students from all of the great things that they have accomplished this year. So thank you to all the administrators that are here this evening and all of the staff that are here to help present to our students and congratulations again to all of our students. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Minio.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to, before anyone leaves us, I'd like to open this up to the board members. I'm sure some of us would like to say thanks to our wonderful students. So if can see hands perhaps, a grid. Let's see. Is there anyone? Okay, Katie Belko, please, if you'll join us in congratulating our students.
I just want to say congratulations to everyone. All the hard effort and work put through during this pandemic is definitely not unnoticed by your teachers and the board. And to quote Mr. Dowling, it is a great year to be a Falcon. And I love your enthusiasm about our students and about not just the athletics, but the academics and great accomplishments. So congratulations to everyone.
Anyone else? Want to say, Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate everyone. Outstanding achievements. And I have to say, as I'm sitting here and I'm watching the awards, I have never felt so, so much pride and at the same time felt like such a failure for not achieving a tenth of what you, you have all achieved already and you're still, and you're still in school. So thank you for everything that you do and you're all, you will all be great successes. And I know I'm very proud of you. I think we all are. So thank you.
Anyone else raise their hand? Mr. Tofano?
Yeah, I just, I would, I would like to thank the staff, the coaching staff. They do an incredible job with these kids. They, they really keep them out of trouble and, and they, and they make them good people on and off the field. And, and I just, I would like to thank the public for showing up for that final lacrosse game. It was incredible to fill the stands at a lacrosse game. It was like one of the first times I've ever seen that happen. It meant a lot to the kids. Even though they lost that game, it really meant a lot to them. And I hope that we could get those stands filled more often. It was great to see the public come out and support them. And Matt Euro, you're an incredible kid. That's all I'm going to say. Every time I see something about you, it's incredibly positive and you're a really hard worker and your parents should be really proud of you and your brother. Thank you.
Ms. Derby?
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone. A special thank you to our staff, our coaches, our teachers, everybody involved during such a trying year where it would have been easy to give up. We had our staff and our coaches and, and teachers really go above and beyond to make sure that our students and our athletes could achieve the best that they could. So thank you to all of them and congratulations to all of our students.
Ms. Siegel, Siegel, excuse me. You had your hand up?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, just echoing some of the other remarks, it's just wonderful to see all the achievements. Congratulations to all the students. It's academics, athletics, it's everything else together. So, so proud of your achievements. Great job.
Madam President, it's Andy Glory, if I may.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Being a board member has its ups and downs. There are times in which we go to bed at 1:30 in the morning and wonder why the heck did I sign up for this? And there are times in which we go to the, the care center and hand out the degrees for kids and then you, it all comes together. What, what a wonderful event when you give the diplomas to our students. And this is probably close second to that, when we see the number of students, whether they're academic or athletic, the achievements that they gain and the society that they're going to enter into, college, they enter into workforce, they're going to enter into the future. It's really highly rewarding as a board member, I must say, to watch this many kids achieve. You know, All-American athletes coming from Monroe, where to go Falcons. Thank you very much to the, to the teachers, the coaches, the students, whether they're athletic or academic. Congratulations. Very well done. Thank you very much on behalf of entire Monroe Township. Thank you, everyone.
Anyone else? Okay, yes. Please, Ms. Bearman.
Just want to echo, congratulations for all the achievements, all the students and the staff and good luck in the future.
Mr. Rutske?
So I want to absolutely echo everybody's thoughts. Great to see all those accomplishments. And I'm actually going to change direction just a little bit and say what a fabulous job, whether it's the administrators, the staff, the coaches did in putting this presentation together. We've never had it flow this smoothly and be able to celebrate so many kids at one time. So job well done on that and kudos to everybody.
And Dr. Alvec, how many signatures did we have that you and I both signed to Mr. Rutske's point?
I think I have the last count. It's definitely over 200.
It was our pleasure to sign those awards.
Nicely done.
Mr. Nikotinsky, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to say congratulations. Well done to the coaches and the students and go Monroe. Thank you.
Anyone else? Because I would like to add my voice. Mr. Dowling, I think I'm officially saying that you are our Falcon Father. So welcome to Monroe. And we are happy that you are moving our, our wonderful athletic organization forward. So welcome and keep up the good work. I also, of course, am very grateful for our parents, parents of our students, the devoted staff and coaches. The coaches are amazing. The energy of our students and the determination. I know learning to be a good sport is, is very important and that's what we're looking for in our students. But it's great to win and congratulations to all the hard work that brings you to success. And again, thank you to the enthusiastic public and we are very grateful to be a Monroe family and a Falcon family. So thank you all. And thanks to the staff for putting this together. I see some wonderful faces that are, that always join us in our board meetings. So thank you to our staff. I see Mr. Maraldo and Dr. Lehman, Dr. Higgins. And again, Mr. Dowling and all of the other staff and coaches. We are very grateful. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, shall we move on, folks? All right. The next, next on the agenda is our public forum. So I don't, I, we may have some parents and people in the public who would like to congratulate our students. And who is our technician this evening? Is it Mr. Feldman?
Yep, Mr. Tag.
Mr. Taglia. Okay. Could you please, if you, can you also put up the phone number in case someone can't get through? I know the weather has been a slight problem this evening. Okay. And then you can announce if we have someone who would like to speak.
Madam Chair, Mike Gorski speaking. And I also have one that was submitted via email.
I saw that. Mr. Gorski will hold off until we're finished with the call-ins. There was, there was one email, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Tag?
Um, I do not see anybody's hand raised.
Don't tell me there isn't a parent in the audience who doesn't want to say something about their children or their children's team. Here we go.
Let's see here. I have Mr. Judge Poy.
Mr. Doug Poy. Doug Poy?
It says George.
George Poy. Yes, that's Mr. Poy. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Poy. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I hope you can hear me. I'm not, I'm not a parent, but I, I was very impressed with the presentation tonight. Not only impressed with the presentation, but impressed with all the honors that our students and coaches managed to achieve over the spring season. I think it's just fantastic. It's good for the schools, good for the community, but it's particularly good for the students. Turning to a different issue, I noticed in looking at the agenda that the board's going to be evaluating or starting to evaluate Superintendent Alvec this evening during closed session. And I know that this is a major responsibility of the board and it has a major impact on our teachers and our students. I worked in education for over 40 years and during that time I served under at least six different superintendents. And from what I have observed of Dr. Alvec during numerous board meetings, she is, in my opinion, doing a very good job. I know I'm not one of the evaluators, but I'm sharing my opinion with the board as a member of the public. And I am confident that the board will conduct a fair evaluation and show their support for all the great work that Dr. Alvec is doing and particularly has done during these very trying times over the past year and a half or so with our COVID pandemic. So I wish you well in that evaluation and I commend Dr. Alvec for her quality of her work and her leadership of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poy. Mr. Tagliafarro, next.
Madam Board President, I don't have anybody right now with their hand raised.
Okay, then we'll have Mr. Gorski read the submitted email, please. And then we'll go back to see if there's anyone else in the public.
Yes, ma'am. The email was submitted by Virginia McGinnis, MCGINNIS, email address vmcginnis1@outlook.com to the Board of Education. Tonight, the evaluation of our superintendent, Dr. Dory Alvec, is on the agenda. I urge the board to evaluate Dr. Alvec fairly relative to her peers in Middlesex County who are dealing with a similar set of facts. It is grossly inappropriate for board members to claim the self- It is grossly inappropriate for board members to claim the South Brunswick or Edison superintendents are more competent than Dr. Alvec on the grounds that South Brunswick and Edison have been able to reopen schools five full days a week earlier back in March. In March, South Brunswick only had 18% of students choosing in-person spread across 10 schools and Edison only had 30% of students in-person spread across 19 schools. In contrast, Monroe had 41% of students in-person spread unevenly across eight schools. It is not a fair comparison and certainly I'm sure Dr. Alvec would have been able to reopen our schools full-time earlier if she were dealing with a completely different set of facts and circumstances. It is inappropriate for board members to compare Monroe to smaller school districts in other counties that have fewer children in-person at their schools. It is incumbent upon board members to, capital letters, do the research to find out other Middlesex County school districts who have similar set of facts as Monroe to be able to evaluate Dr. Alvec fairly. It should not be left up to random members of the community to do the research that board members should be doing some themselves." Virginia McGinnis, 325, C. Nantucket Lane, Monroe Township.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tagliafarro, we'll going once, going twice. Anyone else?
Nope, there's no one else.
Okay, then can we bring back the, I guess, the grid of our board members? And I would ask for a motion to close the public portion? We'll have a voice vote?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All right. So that was Mr. Tofano, seconded by Ms. Gerby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I only hear a few, okay? Any opposed? No one opposed? Okay, so I believe the next order of business is going into closed session. Let me, before we read the resolution, let me, let the public know the process. The evaluation process is done every year for our superintendents. It's across the board. It's a state regulation. The board members who participate spend some time going through the superintendent's board goals and how she has accomplished them. And then there are a series of questions, sort of like, it's almost like multiple choice questions. And then they're calculated and they go into a coalition and the board will be discussing that this evening. The only members of the board will be here in the closed session this evening and there will be no action taken in this evening. And Wednesday, we anticipate that we will sit down with Dr. Alvec after going into closed session for that in particular. Hopefully, we'll have all of our documentation ready for her. It's a very quick one. Usually, there's extra time in between from the initial closed session with board members to speaking with Dr. Alvec. So everybody had, all the board members had an opportunity to have their voices heard. And we will be sharing the information with all of the board members this evening. So we have a resolution. Let's see. I shall read it. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Monroe Township, of Monroe Township hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject: The superintendent evaluation, which I just explained. Following the closed session, action may be taken. However, this evening, it is unlikely that specific action will be taken. And the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at this time as the need for confidentiality, confidentiality no longer exists." When we come out of closed session, since this was, I guess, there was not a public, there, there was, should be a public forum after this. So we might open it up, but it would be specifically on the closed session, which again, there may not be any action taken. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, second, okay. And before we go in, we have to also have a resolution to, since, since no administrators will be in the meeting, we have to have a resolution to have a temporary board secretary. So it is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Adi Nikotinsky as temporary board secretary for this meeting in accordance with NJFA 18A:16-1.1. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay, any second? Chris?
Second.
Oh, Karen Bearman seconded it. Okay, so what's going to happen is, I believe, Ms. Belko, are you available to have us go into our, into our Zoom meeting?
Yes, I have to leave mine so that I can start, I have to leave this one right now so I can start the other.
Okay, go ahead. We'll, we'll join you in a few minutes. And I want to thank the administrator. I don't know if the administrators will be sticking around for us to come out of closed session. If not, I thank you for your presence this evening and we will come out of the closed session and then most likely adjourn very shortly. Yes, Mr. Gorsky.
I beg your pardon. Unless, if there's any objections, the minute we'll show that there was no, nobody recusing or abstaining from going into closed session. Also, the resolution to appoint board secretary, both of those passed unanimously.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. All right. So please, we will leave this. We'll, we'll go back to, we'll come back to this when we are finished with our closed session. But we will leave this at this time. And I believe we have to get out of this entirely and close it down, Mr. Tagliafarro. And then we will come back to it.
That is correct.
Okay, because it's closed session. Okay, thank you all. See you in a few.
Good night.
Good night. We are back from our closed session. Is everybody with us? Looks to be. We are back from our closed session and the, I don't see that we have a public portion. Is there, Mr. Tagliafarro, is there anyone in the public with a raised hand for any reason? No? Okay. The next meeting of the Board of Education is going to occur on June 16th, 2021. That is Wednesday of this week. It'll begin at 7:00. So that is our next scheduled regular Board of Education meeting. And do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
And it'll be in person?
Oh, yes. Let's, Karen, do me a favor. Real quick, tell everybody how that's going to work.
The Board of Education meeting is in person for the first time in a long time on Wednesday with proper safety protocols of masking and social distancing. There is remote access to view, but all public forum will be held in person.
And that will be at the high school in the regular order of business?
Yes.
So we'll, happy to see everyone in, all together. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Okay, just about everybody first and everybody second. So Adi, that is, Andy, I believe, and then Ken Chiarella. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody want to stay longer? No. Okay, thank you all for everything. Have a great night. Good night. See you much Wednesday.